Meeting from Monday, April 6, 2020. Bishop, would you lead us in the elections?
So. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay.
The New York Penn State Annual Meeting, Monday, April 6, 2020, 6:00 PM. Mayor's Committee Appointments for the Official Year Commencing, April 6, 2020. Building Day, first Tuesday, date to be determined, Trustee Hoffs and Trustee Johnson. Emergencies, third Thursday, 10:00 AM, Armory, Trustee Hoffs and Trustee Johnson. Fire and Fire Alarm, second week, date to be determined, Trustee Hoffs and Trustee Johnson. Insurance, Risk Managers, Quarterly, April, July, October. January, date to be determined, Trustee Daniels and Trustee Johnson. Parks, fourth Tuesday, 7:15 PM, Kennedy Park, Trustees Johnson and Trustee Renfro. Purchasing, Mayor Ryan and Trustee Daniels. DPW Sanitation Streets Recycling, fourth week, date to be determined, Trustees Renfro and Hoffs. Sewers, third week, date to be determined, Trustee Hoffs and Renfro. Tax and Water, second week, date to be determined, Trustee Johnson and Trustee Hoffs. Water Plan, first week, date to be determined, Trustee Daniels and Renfro. Budget, third week, Tuesday, 6:00 PM, just before boarding all mayor and trustees. Library, first Thursday, 6:30 PM, Trustee Hoffs and Trustee Renfro. Traffic Safety Board, fourth Monday, 6:30 PM, Trustees Daniels and Trustee Johnson. Police Committee, Trustees Daniel and Renfro. Legal, Trustees Daniel and Trustee Renfro. Clerk's Office, Trustee Hoffs and Trustee Johnson. Controller, Trustees Renfro and Trustee Daniels. I'd like to poll the board. Trustee, Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Hoffs?
Here.
Trustee Daniels?
Here.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan wishes to announce the appointment of Charles E. Renfro as Deputy Mayor of the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the official year commencing April 6 of 2020. The appointment of Miguel Alvarado as Associate Village Justice for the Incorporated Village of Penn State, official year commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Daniels?
Yeah.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Gaby Feinberg as Special Prosecutor in the Village Court at a fee of $135 per hour commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Question, go ahead.
If it's an appointment, is there a vote required for an appointment?
If it's an appointment, is it a vote for appointment?
Yes, because everything is subject to approval by the Board of Trustees.
Yes. He said yes. Trustee.
That's it?
He said yes.
Okay.
One more, one more.
And Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Renfro?
Yes.
The appointment of Ruben J. Correa as Special Counsel in the Village Court at a fee of $75 per hour commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Peter Withley as Special Prosecutor in the Village Housing Court at a fee of $40 per hour commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yeah.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Somas Said, Special Prosecutor in the Village Housing Court at a fee of $65 per hour for housing and $40 per hour otherwise for period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
This is a question.
Counselor, did you tell what's the difference between these two? Is it $65 or $40?
Deputy Mayor asks what is the difference between the fees for 65 and 40? The reason why Somas Said is paying, is being paid $65 per hour for housing is because she has specific cases and defendants that she follows and writes motions for specifically. It's also her experience and she supervises and sets the schedules for the other special prosecutors. The Somas Said is a woman. The $40 per hour is just her in-court time when she is handling traffic violations.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Did you have number six too?
Yeah, we skipped six, my mistake.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, are we back?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Daniels?
God, Jack, get here, please, you are complicated.
We're looking at number seven, Trustee Daniels. The appointment of Somas Said as a Special Prosecutor. Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels, I'm sorry, Trustee Daniels, is that a question? Right. His question was why was she receiving a different amount? $65 for housing and $40 for otherwise?
That's the same course tonight.
Right, he didn't, he didn't hear you Deputy Mayor. So I explained that the $65 is because Somas Said was, is assigned specific cases for specific defendants that she follows those cases from beginning to end, she tries them, she does those motions and she also supervises the other special prosecutors. The $40 for hours, her in-court time for traffic infractions.
How does the contract, how does the contract? How is she, they make supervisory?
Based upon, it's not, she's not supervisory, she's, I shouldn't use that word. She sets the schedules.
Of the other prosecutors?
Of the other prosecutors, correct. She's the one that sets their schedules.
Yes.
Thank you. It carried. We had an oversight on number six, we're gonna go back. The appointment of Dwayne Mitchell as Special Prosecutor in the Village Housing Court at a fee of $40 an hour for the period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Carolyn Klein as Special Prosecutor at a fee of $40 per hour for the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yeah.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Mayali McCauley Lee as Special Prosecutor at a fee of $40 per hour for the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yeah.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Rhonda Leader as Special Prosecutor at a fee of $40 per hour for the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Joy Brunch as Special Prosecutor at a fee of $40 per hour for the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2020.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
abstaining.
Trustee Johnson abstaining. Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Joel A. Watson at Perdian as Special Prosecutor at a fee of $40 per hour for the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021. One.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Heather D. Crossley as Special Prosecutor at a fee of $65 per hour for the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
This is number 13?
Yeah, right, there's a typo in the amount.
Okay.
It should be 65. Correct, there's a typo, it should be 65. This is a Special Prosecutor that the Board voted to hire, I believe, two meetings ago that's gonna work specifically with the Buildings Department?
Could you have, could you fix the resolution to read that?
Yes. Yes. Samantha just read, Samantha just read the amended question.
Yeah, amended resolution.
Question, what does Feinberg do? Does he work with the Buildings Department?
Correct. Feinberg does also work with the Buildings Department but he also let the mayor know that this might be his last year doing that.
That's true. Oh, that was nice. Okay. So where are, well, okay, so she's going to assist him until he?
I wouldn't say assist, she's going to be doing much of what he does on other cases. She's going to be drafting many of the summons and warrants that the building inspectors, that it takes time for them to do so it'll free them up to do more actual inspections. So she'll be drafting their warrant affidavits, their summonses and things of that nature. Right now, they drafted on their own. Trustee Johnson, oh, I need a motion.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Jennifer Mark as Special Prosecutor at a fee of $40 per hour for the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
So move.
I need a second?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Stacy Harvey as Assistant for the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the period commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of the Certified Accountant Firm of the Rocky Smith, LLP, 290 Broad Howell Road, 115 East Melville, New York, 11747 for the Incorporated Village of Penn State for the fiscal year commencing April 6, 2020, to April 5, 2021 at an annual fee of $68,000.
So move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The compensation to be paid to members and alternate members of the Board of Zoning Appeals fiscal year commencing June 1, 2020 shall be as follows. Chairman of the Board, $175 per meeting. Each member other than the chairman, $150 per meeting. Further, no compensation will be paid for a meeting which a member does not attend. There shall not be, there shall be no more than 12 regular meetings during fiscal, the fiscal year. As of April 6, 2020, the zoning board shall be comprised of Anthony... No, didn't Anthony Lamuro, didn't he resign? He resigned. No, that's incorrect.
That's incorrect.
Yes, he resigned. So we're gonna, that's all. Raymond Roden, April 4, 2022. Sharina Gonzalez-Lucas, April 3, 2023. Danny Leo, Chairman, April 4 of 2022. Wayne Hall Jr., April 6, 2024. Board of Zoning Appeals meets first Thursday of each month, 6:00 PM at Village Hall.
Madam Attorney, who is the replacement for Anthony Lamuro?
That's vacant.
It remains vacant?
Yeah. Go ahead. Go ahead. Trustee Daniels? Oh, the mayor was asking who replaced Anthony Lamuro and I said it remains vacant.
Okay, so what, I mean, we vote on this and after we find someone, I guess we put them on, correct?
Correct.
I thought we replaced him.
Call for the vote?
Sure.
I'm sorry, one second.
Hans Devonott.
Sure did.
Yes, it's Hans Devonott.
The name should be Hans Devonott.
So then, Trustee Daniels, did you hear that?
From Country Club State.
And we did replace him with Hans?
Devonott.
Fe- Devonott.
Oh, okay.
Right. So behind Devonott expires, term expires April 3 of 2023. That was just done, Hans Devonott, right? Yes.
That's correct.
That's right. Cause he was filling in for Danny. Yes. Did you catch that? April 3, 2023, he's finishing the balance of Anthony Lamuro's term.
Devonott. And I heard that Danny Leo's expiration date was changed to?
No, it, it remains to '22. He's, he's the chairman for that time.
Okay, so the '24?
Was a typo.
Okay, thank you.
Wayne Hall Jr. is goes to '24.
Thank you.
So that's a reappointment of Wayne Hall Jr.?
Correct. Trustee Daniels is asking if that's a reappointment of Wayne Hall Jr. And the answer is yes.
So then Danny's term expires on, like, '22?
Correct.
Does that mean he's running here?
No, that, that's correct. Danny Leo's term expires April 4, 2022. And that is being corrected, yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If their appointment doesn't expire until then, why are we voting on the one's term that doesn't expire until '20? If they've been appointed already?
Because last year's annual meeting, Danny Leo was only appointed as chairman for one year. So this is making him chairman until '22.
What about Ray Roden?
So Ray Roden doesn't need to be on here but it's telling you who the board consists of.
Okay, all right, all right.
So we're voting on Danny, Danny, additional year, '22, and Wayne Hall, four years?
Correct. So Trustee Daniels is confirming that really what we're looking at, the change here is Danny Leo as chairman for the additional year until '22 and then Wayne Hall Jr.'s reappointment until '24.
But Danny Leo was the chairman last year.
Right, but it was only for one year.
Oh, okay.
I have a question. Madam Village Attorney, is there a attendance requirement in regards to these meetings?
No, there isn't.
Okay, so if a person misses several meetings, can that person be voted off the board?
So the person is a public officer and if they miss several meetings, they can be asked to step down. There are steps that we can take. But we did ask the Secretaries of the Zoning Board whether that was an issue with any of these members and Richard Robinson says that it wasn't. That everyone on this list was diligent, would come to meetings and participated.
Thank you.
I need a motion?
Move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Sorry, I will be, yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The compensation to be paid for members of the Zoning Planning Board for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2020, shall be as follows. Chairman of the Board, $175 each. Each member other than the chairman, $150 per meeting. Further, no compensation shall be paid for any meeting which a member does not attend. Meetings are not to exceed 12 per year. Planning Board shall now be comprised of Rashid Walker, April 5, 2021. Reverend Lindwood E. Dean, April 3, 2023. Keneitha Pettis, Chairman, Chairperson, April 5, 2021. Leroy Brown, April 1, 2024. Marsha P. Turner, April 3, 2023. Planning Board meets every third Monday of each month, 6:30 PM at Village Hall. I need a motion? It was moved by Trustee Johnson?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee? Yes.
Uh, we did the same thing here, all these people all coming back, why are they, why are they here this time?
So the big change here is the, the compensation for the board?
Yes.
They, previously, the Chairman of the Board's compensation was 150 and the members' compensation was 125. We increased it.
Those are the increase.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we still have to notify you all of what, who the board is comprised of.
Okay.
And we're keeping Mr. Brown, Leroy Brown. So that was a question from Trustee Daniels.
And, and, is he still, is he still, I'm happy to do this before, is, is he still compensated with the CDA?
My understa- my understanding is that he is not, he was, so Trustee Daniels is asking if Leroy Brown is still doing work for the CDA under that grant? And my understanding is that that grant is run out and he is not.
Oh, okay.
There's no one else, so that the whole house of inspectors thing is gone?
I, I, I don't know if it's gone.
The zombie?
He's, so there was a grant that Leroy Brown was doing the inspection. Well, my understanding is that that grant is run out. I don't know if it was renewed or, I can't say it's gone, Trustee Daniels. I don't know if it was renewed.
As of now, there is no zombie home inspector, signed to zombie home.
There is, there is?
Nope, not through the CDA.
Did you hear that, Trustee Daniels? So Trustee Hoffs says as of now, there is no zombie home inspector.
So does that mean we didn't need one from the beginning or we're hiring somebody else? Hello?
Yes, I, I hear you, Trustee Renfro, I'm sorry.
So we have to see if, if they have another grant and if they're gonna do the same thing. If not, that's just an assignment that we have to ask the Buildings Department to assign somebody to.
Did you hear that, Trustee Renfro?
Uh, no, I didn't.
Okay, so we have to see if that grant is going to become available again and if not, we have to see if someone from the Buildings Department can be assigned to take on that task.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Daniels?
Yeah.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
There are two vacancies available as members of the Human Relations Council. Human Relations is now comprised of Dorothy Porter. Well, no, that's incorrect, it's one vacancy because we just added Alicia Sardui. So it's Dorothy Porter, April 5, 2021. We just included Alicia Sardui, April 5, 2021. Burnett Houston Willett, April 4, 2022. Kristen Reynolds, April 4, 2022. Terry A. Banks, April 4, 2021. Bridget Barker, April 5, 2021. Marilyn Vallejo, April 5, 2021. Rosalind Sito, April 5, 2021. And a vacancy for April 5, 2021. Human Relations Council meets every third Thursday of each month, except July and August at Village Hall. I need a motion?
Move. Second, with a question. Out of, out of mine, this is Terry Banks, April 4, 2022, not '21.
That's what it says, actually '21. I just missed, I saved before, 2022. Isn't it in the one year plan then? No, they staggered. She's at Human Relations? Yes. Okay. It's in the, it's in, the code, the code book. Okay.
Right, so, so the correction is '22 instead of '21.
Yeah, I just read it wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Jeff Spencer as the Board Member of Recreation and Parks Commission for the official year of April 6, 2020. Recreation and Parks Commission shall now be comprised of Lourdes Watts, April 1, 2024. Vanessa Henry, Chairperson, April 3, 2023. Randy Harrison, April 4, 2022. Barbara Borum, April 5, 2021. Renee Weeks-Corder, April 3, 2023. Jeff Spencer, April 1, 2024. Ricky Cook, April 4, 2022. Recreation and Parks Commission meets every fourth Tuesday of each month, 7:00 PM at Kennedy Park.
So move. Second, with a question.
Yes. De- Deputy Mayor has a question.
Is there a reason that some boards get paid and others don't? What's the rationale, is there, is there a reasoning for that, the rationale?
Yes. That, we've, there are certain boards and it has always operated that way. There are some boards that have received a stipend and some that don't. When we looked at our budget, it would be impossible to pay everyone When we looked at our budget, it would be impossible to pay everyone that's appointed to boards.
Did, did you hear that, um, Deputy Mayor?
How do you determine if it's made and if it's not?
That's historical in nature, and trustee Hobbs says past practice.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I have, um, it said Jeff Spencer. His name happens to be Jeffrey Spencer, so I would like that corrected.
Okay.
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The designation of Mary Burns as Chairperson for the insurance year to serve without compensation, and that said board shall meet at least once a month, except during the months of July and August, and report to the board of trustees after each meeting. Traffic Safety Board shall now be comprised of Mary Burns, Chairperson, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Barbara Gant, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Lenique Blajin, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. William H. Fokes Jr., April one, two thousand and twenty-four. Troy Martinez, April one, two thousand and twenty-four. Traffic Safety Board meets every fourth Monday of each month, except July and August, at six-thirty PM at Village Hall.
So move.
Second.
So, uh, Lenique Blajin is replacing Esther Ford Gilbert?
Yes. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The designation of Mar- Ronald Marjorie as Chairman of the Electrical License Board for the period commencing April sixth, two thousand and twenty, expiring April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Compensation to be paid to members of the Electrical License Board shall be as follows. Chairman of the board, sixty dollars per meeting. Each member other than the chairman, fifty-five dollars per meeting. Not to exceed one meeting per month for the fiscal year, June one of two thousand and twenty. The Electrical Board shall now be comprised of Mike Dmitri, April third, two thousand and twenty-three. John Con Jimmy, April third, two thousand and twenty-three. Tom Conzadine, April third, two thousand and twenty-three. Ronald Marjorie, Chairman, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Christian Castillo, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Electrical Board meets every fourth Thursday of each month at four-thirty PM at two oh two Jackson Street, otherwise known as the Buildings Department.
So move.
I need a second.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
I have a question. Members of this board, do they have to be Hempstead Village residents?
No.
No, no, but they could get waivers, if, if the code does require it. I can check to see.
He explained that at the last meeting.
Because the, the other boards, the planning board, they're village residents, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did he explain that at the last meeting?
Yes, he did.
Did he say that he was waivers, or he?
He didn't say waivers, but he did give an explanation, and he put it in writing, if I'm not mistaken, and I'll give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The designation of Kelly McGee as Chairman of the Board of the Plumber Examiners to serve in such a capacity for the period commencing April one, two thousand and twenty, and expiring on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Compensation to be paid to the members of the Board of the Plumbing Examiner shall be as follows. Chairman of the Board, sixty dollars per meeting. Each meeting other than the chairman, fifty-five dollars per meeting. Not to exceed one meeting per month for fiscal year commencing June one, two thousand and twenty. Board of the Plumbing Examiner shall now be comprised of Kelly McGee, Chairman, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Robert Steinhardt, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Donovan Castro, April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Board of Plumbing Examiners meets every fourth Tuesday of each month, four-thirty PM, two oh two Jackson Street.
So move.
Trust- trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The appointment of Nicholas Moffett as a member of the Hempstead Housing Authority commencing April sixth, two thousand and twenty. The appointment of James T. McKnight as a member of the Hempstead Housing Authority commencing April sixth, two thousand and twenty. The appointment of Max Rodriguez as a member of the Hempstead Housing Authority commencing April sixth, two thousand and twenty. Hempstead Housing Authority shall now be comprised of Cornelius Watson, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Nicholas Moffett, April one, two thousand and twenty-four. James T. McKnight, April first, two thousand and twenty-four. Erica Seymour, which is a tenant member, August thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Leroy Green, which is a tenant member, August thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. Enonicio Perdano, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. And Max Rodriguez, April one of two thousand and twenty-four.
So move.
Second with a question. Um, so, uh, McKnight, Moffett, and, and Max, their terms of, given they expire, so it's reappointed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
There's another, there's another question, I'm sorry. Go ahead, trustee.
The, the, those three gentlemen are all reappointments?
And, and what was the tenant?
The tenant member is Erica Seymour?
And Leroy Green.
And Leroy Green, thank you, and Leroy Green.
And they're voted on by the residents.
And they're voted on by the residents.
Well, elected.
Then wait, both, uh, both of you asked a question, I'm sorry. Trustee Daniels, what was the question?
I'm sorry, um, so they, they had a term, and the residents already voted on that term, so it'd be, it'd be safe for CRA.
Correct. So, um,
the, the, the other question would be, would be, given all the issues with the House regarding, like, reappointing, today people back there, are we pushing the rationale?
So trustee Daniels' question is, given all the issues with the Hempstead Housing Authority, what's the rationale for reappointing these three members?
Recommendation by the executive director?
Did you hear the mayor's response, trustee Daniels? Upon a recommendation of the executive director.
Can I ask you?
Thank you.
Trustee Daniels, just thank you.
And then trustee Renfro, you have a question, right?
Uh, yeah, I was wondering why, why would we have to appoint Erica Seymour and Leroy Green if they're already appointed to the board by the House of you?
They, they are, but we're, we're notifying this board of what, what the board is, of who the board is comprised of, so we're restating it.
Yeah, but they got them in, um, singled out.
No, I think he was asking about Erica Seymour and Leroy Green.
Yes.
Moffett, McKnight, and Max Rodriguez are singled out.
I was, I was thinking about Erica Seymour and Leroy Green. You said they're voted in by the tenants association or some, something, aren't they?
Correct. By the tenant, so they're, they're being restated here for this board, but trustee Johnson is asking about why Nick Moffett, James T. McKnight, and Max Rodriguez are involved, correct? So they're reappointments to the board that this, that the mayor is, um, asking the board to vote on.
Oh, okay, so Cornelius Watson is not a reappointment either?
No, his term doesn't expire until twenty-one.
Okay.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
No.
You said no?
No. Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The reappointment of Teddy McLean, Delores McQueen, and Marina Ramos as members of the Personal Wireless Facilities Board pursuant to local law number four dash two zero zero two, for a one-year term expiring April fifth of two thousand and twenty-one. The designation of Delores McQueen as the Personal Wireless Service Facilities Board zoning officer for a fee of five thousand dollars expiring April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Personal Wireless Facilities Board shall now be comprised of Teddy McLean, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Delores McQueen, zoning officer, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Marina Ramos, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Sharice Vanderhold, by statute, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. This name is gonna change from Grace Lawrence to Joe Gill, by statute, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Personal Wireless Service Facilities Board meets on the fourth Thursday at eleven AM of each month at Village Hall, Ninety-nine Nichols Court, Hempstead, New York. I need a motion?
Move.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
All village checks shall be signed by the mayor and the treasurer, and in the absence of the mayor, the deputy mayor shall sign all checks with the treasurer. In that pursuant to section four dash four zero eight C of the village law, all such checks are as may be issued by the village may be signed with facsimiles of the mayor's treasurer's and deputy mayor's signature.
Move. Second.
Trustee Ja-
There's a question from trustee, um, Daniels. Are the amount of the checks that they can sign?
I can hear a question. What the trustee is saying that a, a certain amount of money is, is you require two signatures, not just one?
That, that's always the case. I think he's saying after a certain amount, you should be able to sign by fax. Is that what you mean?
Correct.
Okay, so that's something that we can talk to the treasurer about? This has been the policy that the village has had going back, but keep in mind, the checks aren't signed until the board votes on the payment of any bills anyway.
Right, so you mean over a certain amount, there should be a wet signature?
Correct.
Right, so that's, that's, that's something that we should discuss with, um, with, with the county, with the treasurer. Yeah, it's, I, I think that you could still do this and then vote on a policy later. So, did everyone catch what, what trustee Daniels was saying?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
The taxes and assessments of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead shall be collected by the village clerk thereof in accordance with village law.
So move.
I need a second?
Second with a question. Taxes and assessments of the Incorporated Village shall be collected by the village clerk?
That's in every municipality.
I know, but, but do you guys actually collect the taxes and assessments?
No.
But that's just the law for NICOM. It's a village law.
And so, right, and if it's the law, it's the law for a reason. I just was wondering why, if this is the law, and we don't actually do that.
I mean, her name is there, her signature is, is fixed on all of the receipts in the village. Yes.
All right, thank you.
But I think there's still some to go get to, it's not the right path.
Right, that, we should look into it. Uh, although her signature is a fix herein, I doubt they know anything about how many taxes is collected.
True, but what happens is, we do get bonded, the mayor, um, Joe Gill, the treasurer, the clerk, and myself are all bonded. And reason being in accordance with the village law, us being bonded, so those checks that go out from, um, assessment department, if you collect anything or within the court or in tax and, um, water, when that money is collected, um, by us, what is transported to the different banks that you have here listed that you'll be voting on this evening as well, the village clerk's name is listed there and bonded. So, the board is voting on, um, the clerk to, to be the person that collects it, and I think that that vote is being taken based upon what the clerk's jobs duties are as outlined in the village law. It doesn't have to be, but that's what the village law reads, so I just pulled it up. Section four dash four zero two of the village law defines the clerk and the clerk's duties. And subsection F, as in Frank, says, shall collect taxes and assessments of the village as provided in this act if the board of trustees shall, by resolution, determine that the taxes and assessments of the village be collected by the clerk.
Right, and, and again, we, we have something that we're voting on that we actually don't do.
Right, so you're, so you, you're making that determination by a resolution, um, which you don't have to do, but Samantha is giving the reason as to why this board doesn't. Yeah, and see, normally what happens is, when you go, when we go for the training at the NICOM, normally you find village clerks being a treasurer as well, being a village clerk treasurer. And that's why, one of the reasons.
Right, but we don't have a village clerk treasurer. We have a treasurer.
Right.
And I, yeah, well, just so that, because, but I think we need to define that moving forward, because we don't have a clerk treasurer. And we're voting on something that we don't actually do.
Right.
And I, and we need to make that correction, because again, we're, we're passing something that we don't do. We need to define it as we do here in the village, that we have a village treasurer.
So we're gonna withdraw those two motions from trustee Renfro and trustee Hobbs, if, if you're okay with that?
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Okay, so it was withdrew, Deputy Mayor, that was your motion. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion was withdrawn by Renfro and Hobbs, second. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Wait, what are they going for?
No, we, we,
Going to withdraw?
No, no, it's with you, it's with you. Trustee Daniels, you still with us, though?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
So this item is actually pulled?
So, so that item, um, Deputy Mayor withdrew his motion. We're gonna pull number twenty-seven.
Until we get some priority or something on this?
No, until it's, a- a- unless we're gonna, I don't think that we need to reword it, because we have a superintendent of tax and water that does, makes those collections. Right, if I find out, um, through research, that we actually do need to pass a resolution specifically stating that the superintendent of tax and water is to do that, I'll draft a resolution and we can put it up at a later meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The following banks are designated as the proper depositors for the funds of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead. TD Bank, Bank of America, Flushing Bank, JP Morgan Chase. Said depository shall be required to file with the Village of Hempstead a copy of their CRA compliance policy statements.
So move. Second.
Okay. We have a Flushing Bank in Hempstead?
There's one in Garden City on Franklin Avenue.
I, I, I think there's something we could, we could look at, is change that, if something's not, well, I'd have to say, um, the, the, right?
So,
It might be if another legal law, something you could, could be put on, sort of, funding or something like that, we should make sure of, of, of.
Um, okay, so I, can I, I'm just gonna restate what, um, trustee Daniels said. He said he actually had the same question about Flushing Bank, but before we, um, change that, we might wanna look into it, because they may be here for bonding purposes. Is, is that all correct, trustee Daniels?
Yeah, I mean, there's one of those, if you give the board, that has a blocking here, from, from the front out, of, of, of.
Right, so before, so he's saying before we try to make any changes, we should make sure there's no reason why Flushing Bank is, you know, is here, or, um, any specific reason why we're doing business. or, um, any specific reason why we're doing business with them?
Okay, 'cause there is no date here, so that's fine. Okay.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Richner Communications is hereby designated as the official newspaper of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead for the official year commencing April 6, 2020, for all village publications. The village clerk is also authorized to publish legal notices with the exception of certain tax sale notices in Newsday, Hempstead Uniondale Times, Notecia, and La Travuna Hispania.
So move.
Second.
Richner, uh, Communications is the company that took over the Beacon, is that correct?
Yes, right.
Yes.
So they're the company that took over the Beacon?
And they publish it inside of the Long Island Herald?
They also publish in the Long Island Herald?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, just to restate what trustee, trustee Daniel says. He says when he reads the Beacon, um, he reads our column and then a whole bunch of other news that unrelated to us. Has there been a change with this new owner, or are we signing up to do more of the same?
Signing up to do more of the same.
Did you hear, um, deputy clerk's response?
Yes, the Hempstead Uniondale Times interviewed, they declined.
Okay, so, um, the deputy clerk was saying that it'll be the same, and then the mayor just said that we also interviewed the Hempstead Uniondale Times, but they declined to submit a bid. Is that correct, Mayor?
Right.
Well, we don't pay them. We only pay them whenever we submit an, um, at legal advertisements. When we publish in the paper, we pay for those notices within the paper. And they could range from like thirty dollars, depending on, um, the verbiage, how long the wording is, to up to sixty-five, seventy-five, up to a hundred dollars sometimes. And we normally publish for public hearings, special meetings, and annual meetings, the, um, um, what do you call it, the, um, the two upcoming meetings, the tentative budget and award rate. That's, we only publish, which we don't do a lot of public hearings.
I'm here. Did you hear her response?
So I'm, I'm waiting for you, 'cause I can hear it worse.
Oh, sorry, um, she said that we only publish with, uh, the Beacon at certain times when we're publishing legal notices, so we'll only charge for that based upon the length of the notice. Are our bids also published in the Beacon as well? Also requests for, um, proposals. RFPs are up, are placed in the, uh, Beacon. So we, we pay per advertisement. Is there a charge for the column in the Beacon?
No, they charge us different prices. It depends on the, the amount of words. They go by the words.
So, so what column would you be referring to, trustee Daniels, for example? I don't think, is there a mayor's column in the Beacon?
Yes.
Yes.
There is. Okay, how much will we charge for that? Do you know, do you don't know off the top of your, she doesn't know off the top of her head, but she says that it really depends on the length of, of what, what it is that we're publishing. So it varies?
Yes.
Hempstead Uniondale Times did not submit. They didn't send anything in.
He came in for an interview, but he never submitted his quotes or his prices.
I, I didn't catch that, trustee Daniels. Uh, what was the request? He's asking what was the request for? What was the RFP for? What was it looking for?
We were looking for prices, for legal notices, what does he charges for legal notices, to put it inside of his paper.
Okay, so we're looking for, we were looking for prices for-
For legal notices, public hearings.
How much he would charge to place notices, uh, legal notices, notices for public hearings, the mayor's column.
Et cetera.
Et cetera. And he, he came in for an interview, but he never actually responded and gave us his price list, right, his pricing?
So, so, the, 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 uh, mayor's column, uh, is actually done by the PR firm?
Yes.
So that's part of their contract. We don't pay the paper. The PR firm submits that, and whatever cost they cover. So that's part of the contract with the PR firm.
So they actually, are they, they actually covering the cost of the column with the paper as well?
Yes.
It's part of the contract. Uh, but would you please let the public know, uh, that the agenda is on the website?
Did you, did you hear that, trustee Daniels?
So, the, the, the mayor's column is actually paid for within the, our PR firm's contract? They come, they, you know, they prepare the mayor's column, and then when it's submitted, they actually make the payment to the publication?
I'll be advised if the sound is one in and out according to one of the views. And one view says the sound is bad.
So we're paying, we're paying them to put our column into their periodic column?
That's inside of their fee. That's an F E that they charge us annually, trustee Daniels.
But trustee, and trustee Daniels, you're referring to the PR firm?
No, in general, at the end of the day, it's a privilege, right? The village is paying the PR firm, the PR firm pays care, but, so they're paying for them to put the, uh, the column into, into their paper.
Into the Beacon?
Into the Beacon.
Yes. That's one of the services that we pay for.
Okay, and then, just so I'm clear, then, I get paid for the column, and then we pay them to put the, the notices of foreclosure, the RFP notices, and everything else that they make use as well?
Correct, and then we pay the Beacon separately for any legal notices, foreclosure notices, tax lien, sale, um, what else is it? Public, public hearing notices, correct.
But that comes from the different budgets for that particular department, so-
And outside, and outside of, and outside of the mayor's column which we pay for, the legal notices which we pay for, the RFPs which we pay them for, the rest of the paper is basically targeting every place else outside of Hempstead.
Or irrelevant for our purposes?
Irrelevant for our cleaning.
Meaning it has nothing to do with, uh, uh, village government?
It has very little to do with the village's health security.
So, the, the- So, the other, um, the other statement is that, that trustee Daniels is making is that the publication then has no other coverage of the Village of Hempstead other than what we pay them to put in. It talks about yeshiva and things outside of the village, but no coverage of, um, anything to deal with the Incorporated Village of Hempstead.
Right, so we, so, you know, we can look to put out another RFP, but by law, we have to have, uh, papers that we designate for the village to do our notices of meetings and things like that. So we can move forward looking for other firms, but as of today, uh, in this meeting, we have to have papers that we appoint. And of course, we could change that.
It's, it'd be noted that normally, the Beacon, or as it's called now, Richner Communications, the in, inside of the paper changes according to the village that they're publishing. The outside is the differences, if they want.
But I think trustee Daniel's sentiment is that they, in this case, they don't. They don't highlight anything else, um, dealing with the Village of Hempstead other than what we pay them to put in, which is legal notices and stuff. Right, they don't highlight, um-
Brendan's article is also put in by them, but they're fairly new to us.
Who's article?
Uh, historian.
Historian.
Okay, did you hear that, trustee Daniels? Brendan Bethany's articles are up, up in there as well?
So trustee Daniel says he understands that legally we have to designate an official newspaper, but his, um, his issue is that the publication doesn't highlight all the positive things that are occurring in the village. We're, we're paying for notices, we're putting money in their pocket, but they're not highlighting or publicizing any of the positive things that happen in this village. It's, it's, the paper is really about everyone else but us.
Well, listen, there's nothing here saying that we have to keep them for the year. I mean, until we find somebody else.
So that was, that was the other sentiment, um, that, uh, he was getting to, and correct me if I'm wrong, trustee Daniels, you were saying that we could actually, we could move forward with this, but we should really spend some time trying to, um, get other, uh, responses to an RFP for an official newspaper? Right, so, um, he, he's saying he's not trying to make, he's expressing himself that this is a problem, we need to do something about it, um, but it's not something that we can fix right now, but we, it's something that needs to be fixed, and we should look into it and get-
So, what's the official year statement, commencing April 6th, so should we give it a cutoff date?
Well, it's only, this appointment is only for one year.
Yes.
Um, so trustee Daniels-
But it doesn't say that, it doesn't?
No, it says official year commencing April 6, 2020. So it's just one year.
But it doesn't tell you when it ends?
So we need to say April 5th, 2021?
It doesn't say that here, so I think we can end it in thirty days.
Yeah, you can.
Okay. I mean, it says the, for the year, but we could, we could say, um, Richner Communications is hereby designated as the official newspaper of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead from April 6, 2020, to, and then go out six months.
Six months?
Because I think you need time to publish the RFP and get the responses.
Why don't you do it like it is? It's dead nothing, thirty weeks.
So October?
Six months or a year of six weeks?
October what?
I didn't hear what you said. Oh, I, I, I got it now. It made sense. Trustee Daniels is saying we just have to make sure that whatever contract we enter into with Richner Communications, it allows us to actually cancel.
Right, it's in the contract, what are we looking at, right?
It allow, we haven't signed a contract yet.
Right, okay.
So we're saying that we would have to make sure that the contract that we do sign has to allow us, will allow us to cancel within a shorter time period than a year. I'm recommending six months, because you do need the due diligence to actually put out the RFP and get the responses.
So what's that first Tuesday, first Monday of October? Well, Tuesday, first Tuesday.
The first Monday in October is October-
No, it's the Tuesday.
First Tuesday is October 6th.
Okay, so we're gonna do till October 6th?
So, ma'am, just a question. Does the, the Beacon give us, and do we have the contract from the Beacon for last year?
Oh, oh, I don't have it in front of me.
Well, we do have one.
We have the contract for the Beacon, correct.
It's a door by-
Yeah, but it's, it's, the contract from last year is not with Richner, it's with the Beacon.
But the big one out of this is for the year, and we're gonna go-
From year to year?
Yes.
I'm just asking that question.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
But the legal notices still has to be designated for me.
But in the meantime, if we did not, um, um, use this contract and it went up on October 6, 2020, we still can use the other papers listed here as an exception. As we have done in the past. Newsday, any other papers you'll see here.
Make it for, make it for six months. Let's, and do for six months, and then we could put out RFPs and move from there, for, for the, um-
October 6th. Okay, so we could re, re-read it, read it over?
Well, you already, you heard a motion by trustee Hobbs and seconded by deputy mayor? So you wanna withdraw your motion?
Yes, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, and trustee Renfro? He's, he's the second, so that's withdrawn.
So Richner Com- Richner Communications is hereby designated as the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead from April 6, 2020, to April 6, 2020, October 6, 2020, for all village publications. The village clerk is also authorized to publish legal notices with the exception of certain tax sale notices in Newsday, Hempstead Uniondale Times, Notecia, and La Travuna Hispania.
Excuse me for a second, so trustee Daniel? Um, Samantha has reread the, um, the resolution, but the dates are from April 6, 2020 to October 6, 2020, six months. I need a motion?
So move.
Trustee Daniel, second. Trustee-
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I just wanna say to everyone who is live streaming with us that you can visit our website at thevillageofhempstead.org, and you will find the meeting there under the agenda for Monday, April 6, 2020. The regular meetings of the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Hempstead shall be held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 6:30 p.m. Except during the months of July and August, of which months the regular meetings shall be held on the first Tuesday, and the annual meeting on the first Monday, April at 6:00 p.m. Thereof, and that the special meetings of the Board of Trustees may be called by the mayor or two trustees acting in concert by causing proper notice to be served pursuant to the law, and that all agenda items must be in the office of the village clerk no later than Wednesday preceding the board meeting. They accept that any item may be added to the agenda by a member of the Board of Trustees up to and including the board meeting itself.
So move.
Agreed.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Provided there are sufficient funds available in the appropriate budget account, the mayor, trustees, and employees be granted permission to attend various conferences and official meetings during the official year commencing the sixth day of April, 2020, and that all necessary expenses in connection with the attendance at said functions shall be a village expense.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
That mileage shall be paid at the rate of fifty-seven point five cents per mile for the businesses' use of a personal vehicle. Tolls and other road expenses shall be paid upon submission of a paid B.C. The board is empowered to make special exceptions to these provisions, provisions, if it is deemed to be in the best interest of the village. Also, before any such trips and or travel take place, board approval must be obtained in writing.
So move.
Yes. Right. Yes, they, usually the church will put it up again one- when it, um, if it increases or goes down.
That's the standard mileage rate for two thousand and twenty, that fifty-seven point five cents.
It actually, it actually, if you remember, I think we, it, it actually decreased, I think it was at like fifty-nine cents?
Yeah.
And we had that in January and then now it's gone down. So when it goes up, we will vote on it again.
Yeah.
Oh, fifty-eight, right.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Remfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
That there, whereas the general municipal law requires the governing body of every municipality to adopt the procurement policy for all goods and services which are not required by law to be publicly bid. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Incorporated Village of Hempstead does not adopt, does adopt, the procurement policy as an appendage here too, which is intended to apply to all goods and services which are not required by law to be publicly bid. Further, any of all procedures not specifically covered in this policy will be adhered to as covered in general municipal law, sections one oh three and one oh four dash B. This policy is effective April sixth, two thousand and twenty and be reviewed on an annual basis.
So move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson? Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee? Trustee Remfro?
Yes.
That whereas the Incorporated Village of Hempstead needs to implement an updated village investment policy. Now therefore, be it resolved that this Board of Trustees hereby adopts the annexed investment policy. This policy is effective April sixth, two thousand and twenty and will be reviewed on an annual basis.
It was seconded by trustee Daniel.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Remfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
That whereas the Incorporated Village of Hempstead needs to implement an updated. And this Board of Trustees hereby adopts the annexed fund policy. This policy is effective April sixth, two thousand and twenty and will be reviewed on an annual basis. I made a motion?
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels? Trustee Remfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
That whereas the Incorporated Village of Hempstead needs to implement an updated credit card policy,